Roll call.
Mr. Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Hayes. Mr. Harbach.
Here.
Mrs. Sensi.
Here.
And Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Is your motion to approve the agenda? I'll move.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Harbach.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before we move into board member reports, an announcement.
Well, it's not really the first announcement. The first announcement was Friday and then there was a community update. But I did announce at our opening day that this would be my last year here as superintendent. You know, in talking with my family and looking at the future, it's time to, you know, begin a second act. I've been in Madison for 23 years. Started as an assistant principal in 2002. Came to the central office in January of 2006 as curriculum director and assistant superintendent and has been fortunate enough to be here starting my 10th year as superintendent. And so I'm ready to make a change. And I know the staff is going to adjust well. They are, like I said on Friday, some of the best people I know. They care deeply for kids. They work hard. You know, Madison has a culture about it that I think any new person coming in can see right away all we have here to offer. So that is, that is what is going to happen. I was very touched by the News Herald article. And I had Ashland reach out to me today, where I got my master's from, to do a website article. So when I get done answering those questions, especially, I love the question they asked me about, "Well, did you take most of your classes online or a blended model? How about all in person in a cohort that came to Mentor and then some on campus at Lorraine Community College?" But no way did I do anything online because it didn't exist back then. That's how old I am. But it's a, the people that have been reaching out, I've gotten all sorts of texts, messages, emails, you know, comments on my Facebook post, my personal page where I announced it. So I'm very touched. I think the highlight of my Friday two pieces was when I asked if I had anything to do with hiring you here in this district, please stand. It was a large number of people. These two ladies as well, I had a hand in hiring. And then we took a staff picture. Which was a last-minute idea that I wanted to do and I had everybody in the gym for a staff picture. And I'm gonna have them all printed for the entire staff.
Did you put up a hobbler chair so everyone was like that?
Yeah, we have a couple stragglers on the side.
I knew it felt last minute, like, oh, they're gonna get organized real quick.
Yeah. And Eileen, yeah, Eileen Fendek, who does our pictures, we called her and she said, "Oh yeah, I can come do that." She thought it was just gonna be like 30 people. And she said, "I only get on this ladder once a year and that's when I do the band picture." And she goes, "I didn't know I was getting on the ladder again." So my husband was on one side holding the ladder and Sally Chorogus was on the other side holding it up. But we got a nice picture out of it. So, yeah. It was a really, really special morning and it's been a real nice start to the school year.
Congratulations.
Yes.
And thank you for giving us this notice. You know, we have an entire academic year here still, you know, under your leadership and that'll give us plenty of time to go through the processes that we need to do to select a superintendent. And there will be process, there will be processes available for the public to participate when the time comes. But for now, congratulations. Many, many accomplishments here at the district. We're appreciative and...
And I'm not done yet.
No?
And I'm full steam ahead.
We've got a whole year here.
I am full steam ahead. I've got some things I want to accomplish before I leave, so.
All right. Does anyone wish to give a board member report? Jeff and I both attended the Gridiron Club and their ribbon cutting ceremony for the new weight room at the high school. Quite an accomplishment on their part to get that done. It was pretty impressive. It's top to bottom, literally. The floor to ceiling has been redone. The ceiling has been, you know, taken care of and looks great. And the floor is all of that kind of material where if you drop the weights, it's cushioned. And they explained in the presentation that all of the weights and everything they bought, they, for some reason, they said, "Well, this isn't stuff you would get at Dick's." And I thought, "Well, Dick's is expensive." And they were saying this is, you know, professional, graded, commercial, weightlifting equipment. Danny DeRobergus was telling me that the company that we bought that equipment from, that we were one of their first customers many, many years ago when we bought the original equipment that was in there. And so they did give us somewhat of a break on that equipment, which was great. I can't think of the name of the company that he said. But, you know, because everybody, they're selling their equipment to our schools. So, I mean, everybody would like to have a discount. But he was able to get that along with the other folks at the Gridiron Club. So congratulations to them and thank you. That's a great accomplishment on their part to be able to get that in. And we contributed some funding as well, the district's part.
And it was from our Lake Health Funds that we had remaining that we used for the flooring.
So thank you to them again. It was really nice. All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the regular, the minutes of the regular meeting of July 23rd, 2024?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mr. Harbach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 8th, 2024?
I'll move. I'll second.
Sarah had told me right before the meeting, this is one that apparently we missed the approval of these minutes at some point months ago. So they're on the agenda. So this is the correct date, just a little bit late. Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mr. Harbach.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the regular, or the meeting, minutes of the regular meeting of May 14th, 2024?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mr. Harbach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We do not have anyone registered for public participation. So we'll now go to reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you. I would like to recommend the approval of the financial statements for July of 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Harbach.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we did just have three then and now statements for the month of July. So I'd like to recommend the approval of the listed then and now statements for July 24th.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Harbach.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Motion passes. And finally, I would like to recommend the approval of the following donations and we do have quite a few of them. I would first, to accept a generous donation of flooring from Madison Boosters to Madison High School to be used for flooring in the cyber cafe. To accept a generous donation to the Madison High School Angel Fund from the following, and I apologize if I pronounce anyone's last name, Linda Chupa, Tabitha Comer, Richard Finch, Lindsay Ziegler, Nanette Jelzstak, Sarah Blair, Melanie Boggs, Megan Koch, Dawn Holloway, Christine Hospiter, Colleen Jackson, Jo Jansen, Tricia Druce, Autumn Sandal, Steve Kohlzar, Marcy Hudson, Carolyn McCorr, Suzanne Masony, Stacy May, Rachel Leckis, Brandy Bradford, Sheila Murva, Rebecca Navarro, Diane Passett, Arlessi Ramirez, Antonio Perez, Tara Peach, Norma Rayano, Yorita Sanchez, Shanna Snyder, David Snyder, Stephanie Stancliff, Pamela Stenger, Dominique Swope, Brittany Burkholder, Alyssa Tucker, and Kathleen Welch. Also, to accept a generous donation of $200 from Mentor Blinds and Draceries to Madison Middle School to be used for the middle school garden. To accept a generous donation of $100 from Pitmaster Dad to Madison Middle School to be used for the middle school garden. To accept a generous donation of $300 from the Fabian family to Madison Middle School to be used for the middle school garden. To accept a generous donation of $500 from Chem Masters to Madison Middle School to be used for the middle school garden. To accept a generous donation of beverages, chips, and cookies from Amanda Meredith to Madison Middle School National Junior Honor Society for the community outreach event for those affected by the power outages in the area. To accept, to accept a generous donation of a dunk tango and balloon twisting services from Luella Hughes to Madison High School National Honor Society to be used for the Blue Street Block Party. To accept a generous donation of 100 book bags filled with school supplies from Just in Time Snapping to South Elementary School to be used as needed. To accept a generous donation of 40 supply stuffed book bags from Lifeline Church to North Elementary School to be used as needed. To accept a generous donation of $750 from Carnuse to North Elementary Kindergarten to be used as needed. To accept a generous donation of $100 from the Meschon Poush family to Madison Middle School to be used as needed for community building use during the power outages.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussions?
I would like to share that the list of the Angel Fund donations were actually from parents, seniors versus giving refunds. They said, "Go ahead and use it to put into the school's Angel Fund for the high school." So, I mean, it could be a couple dollars. It could be a few more dollars than that. But it was whatever was left on their child's account. Thank you to all of them. And to all our donors.
Yes, thank you to all of our donors. Roll call.
Mr. Harbach.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. And that concludes my treasurer's report.
Thank you. Reports the administrative team.
Well, we are two days in and it's, you know, I know a lot of people questioned the staggered start. But I will tell you that for students new to the building, for our kindergarteners and our first graders, you know, our little ones, that's, and any transition new to a building, it helps the students to get acclimated without having to be with every student all at one time. And I went into one classroom this morning of one of our brand-new special ed teachers who's on the agenda this evening. And they had two, two new kids that were transitioning to new aides, new teacher, new routines. And they said, "Thank you. This is so important for our, our students so that they're not overwhelmed, they get off to a good foundation, they have time to adjust and, and, you know, readjust to a routine, not just for our special needs kids, but for all our students to come in." And at the high school, it is a little different. We do it just for the freshmen. And then today, everybody came. But, you know, that's the reason why we do it. I know that there's been a lot of questions, "Why are we doing this again? COVID's over." But our administrators and our staff have felt that this is one of the positive outcomes of COVID. Is that, you know, bringing kids in so that they can be set up for success. You know, we have more and more students with anxiety and if we can lessen that anxiety in any way, this has been one of those ways that it's helped. And as I was walking around the buildings today, teachers were collaborating, going through necessary paperwork and really using their time to help, you know, get the year off to a great start. So I, I appreciate all the feedback that I got when I was in the buildings this week. I do want to, I'm gonna put Gretchen on the spot just a little bit, to talk about her MEA grant and what she's going to bring to the meetings each month. Oh.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Funny story I actually just found out before I came here. I thought the grant was for $25,000. Evidently, it's $50. I get $25,000 this year and $25,000 next year.
Okay, good.
So...
Good mistake.
Yeah, right? I was like, oh. So what MEA is doing is we have so many amazing teachers in our district who do so many amazing things and are often quiet about it. They don't necessarily need recognition or want recognition, but they, they just do so many amazing things with our students. And so we are doing a member of the month spotlight. And Angela was gracious enough to partner with me. And there's a nomination form and the staff can nominate anyone in the district to be highlighted as a member of the month. And then one member will be chosen each month. And actually, win a substantial gift card that we're able to provide to that member through the grant that was written. And they'll be recognized here once a month at the board meeting. Because I think it's so important for our community to see all of the amazing people that we have here in the district working with our students that maybe, you know, we're a little quiet or you wouldn't necessarily always see, but do such amazing things to help all of the children in our district. So I'm really looking forward to coming in, doing that once a month and introducing our community to some really amazing educators.
And, you know, part of that grant was at new teacher orientation last week. Gretchen had breakfast catered for the administrators and the new teachers and the mentor, mentor teachers were our mentor teachers?
No. Some of our MEA officers joined us.
MEA officers. And it was a very positive morning. Dave had everybody start out saying what makes Madison so special. And as I told people on Friday, I said, "Man, they must have been reading my speech." Because I think every teacher that was here echoed something that I had to say on Friday. So it was, you know, a really positive morning and the breakfast was very good. And the breakfast was a local caterer, Mandy Novak.
She has a local catering business called Let Mandy Make It. She's local. I try to use her anytime I can. She's absolutely wonderful. And I always, when I host events like that, like do someone local in the community, all of the gift cards that people will be getting as prizes will be for businesses here in the Madison community as well.
We appreciate what MEA is going to do this year and to highlight some of our outstanding educators.
And next year.
And next year.
Again, next year.
Yeah, next year. I have next year. We'll do it this year and next year. This is Perry Week, so the big game is Friday night. I told Mike Gilligan that his job was to give me that little brown jug. I don't know if it will happen because Perry are the defending state champs in their division. But a girl can dream.
I think they're all the same.
A girl can dream. You know, and I put it out in the universe, so we'll see what happens. I want to highlight a few good things that we put in the update to the board. July, Madison Pre-K received notification that they are now rated gold in the Step Up to Quality Program. So I guess they, they got away from stars because the state report cards stars. So now they're gold, they're the gold standard. It's the top rating for preschools in Ohio. They change things all the time. But we were a five-star program, which is the equivalent now, I guess, of the gold. So I don't know what that means for signs and all that kind of stuff. Another thing on Friday that we had at opening day was, you know, we wrote about it last year, but the, our student-run branch of the Lake County Educational Federal Credit Union, and their name is changing next year, I guess. They won both a state and national award. And they came and presented it to our teacher, BJ Tittman, on behalf of it for his students on last Friday. So that was awesome. And we're really excited that Kelly Komitsky, our Nutrition Services Director, applied for a free, a grant for fruit and vegetables. Now, what this means is, is instead of giving them all at lunch, twice a week, our students will have a fruit or veggie snack along with education. And it's at both elementary schools. And it, and it may start a little bit with three times a week at the beginning and tailor back to two because they give more money upfront. It has to be started by a certain period of time. But I applaud Kelly. I think she's trying to do some different things with our nutrition services program. And this is one of them. And, you know, she is truly remarkable and I'm glad she's working directly for us this year. Blue Street Block Party reminder is Saturday. We will be in the parade. We'll be gathering, what, about 11:30? 11:30? And I will get the candy to throw and all that good stuff. It's a busy weekend between Perry game, 11:30?
That's when we leave.
Yeah, because I think, I think everything starts at 11:00. But if we get there by 11:30, the parade's gonna kick off at noon. And it's gonna start the same way. So we'll start in that parking lot at the high school and end at the middle school. I think it's going into the back at the middle school. But Emily Grau and the National Honor Society, Junior National Honor Society kids have been working hard on this all summer. So, you know, I want to applaud her and the students for their efforts. And Dave?
If you go visit the middle school in the afternoon or you have someone to pick up, you'll notice a change of pattern of traffic. And this is in an effort to reduce the interaction of students among vehicles, become more efficient of getting people in and out of there and trying to keep some of that traffic off of the middle bridge. Because if you've gotten stuck out there at around 3 o'clock on any school day, it's, it can be rough, you know, sitting there waiting to get in. If you're not there early, you are gonna be sitting, or you, in the past, you would be sitting on the road. So, you know, Angela spoke about the staggered start. This has been helpful for this change of pattern at the middle school, having only a third of the families coming through there. The way it works, if you are a car picking someone up, you enter through the east entrance of the building, of the parking lot. You're gonna go all the way back into the parking lot in the back that's inside of the fence. You'll circle around and come back out the same way and park along the curb facing traffic. Buses are coming in through the west entrance. They're going through the back loop and not interacting with any of the kids that are car riders. So I was there for day one. It was, it was very smooth. We had staff members saying it was the best dismissal since they'd been there. Now, the big test, of course, is gonna be Thursday. The drivers will have done it three times for practice. The, the staff is out there. They know how to direct the students. Hopefully, it works as expected and creates a safer, more efficient system. So, and thanks to the parents who, you know, they're listening. We've got hand signs. We've got hand stop signs. One of the teachers was, was hollering, "Just keep pulling up just like Chick-fil-A. Just come all the way." And we all knew that, what she meant.
And that's, that's the biggest, I think, stumbling block is when you're trying to get people to move up. They get, you know, they get very stuck on where they're, you know, supposed to be.
Chick-fil-A or chicks.
And that's right. It's not unique to just this district. Every district I've been in, when there's been student drop-off and pickup, they, you know, people want to stop at the front door.
Yep.
Walking is good exercise. We're okay. We can get them into the building safely, you know.
So thank you to Jack Whaley and Kim Boggs, our, our transportation supervisor and, you know, for getting together, kind of working out this plan. Both of them had similar ideas on this and they put it together. And I'm sure, you know, we'll probably run into a few things here that aren't working the way we expected. And there'll be tweaks along the way, but hopefully it's a better system for everybody.
Jen?
So lots of moving parts, the beginning of the school year. And I started mainly with some big updates in training and documents for our administrative staff to start the year. Just some fine tuning of our processes for discipline and 504 and IEPs.
Tendons.
And, yeah, tendons, yes. Because I have an umbrella that I'm responsible for. So it was good. I felt really strong with where everyone is. We had the EST come in and get kind of all of us on board. And it was interesting because as principals, we don't always have an opportunity to like really, really talk and interact and ask questions. And it was great to see that some of the processes were different in other buildings. And we were like, "Well, why is that?" You know? So it was a great, I'm excited. I think we're on a really good, a really good page to start. And then I was in the buildings today and it was cute. One of the, you know, usually the kids I ask, "So how was summer?" "Oh, great, great." And then I asked this one little gal who grew. Like, it's neat now too because I'm starting to see the kids. It's been five years now. And she's, she's so tall. I was like, "Oh my gosh." I said, "So did you like summer?" And she said, "I like school better." And I was like, "Oh." You know, like they, like there's something about some kids that really just like that. You know, that consistency, that being here, that summer maybe isn't always. It always makes me realize, like, not all kids like summer or Christmas breaks or whatever. So, so, yeah, no, plugging full steam ahead. So let's see, fingers crossed. You're up to good sir.
Thank you.
I'll move. Ready for the recommendations? All right, under the employment motion this evening, we're asking you to accept the following resignations. Dan Brasso, freshman volleyball coach. Sydney Kremiller, JV volleyball coach. Lea Radabaugh, middle school eighth grade volleyball coach. And Jack Whaley as middle school athletic director, with the dates attached. We're asking you to approve the following employment contracts. Justin Lewis is an intervention specialist at South Elementary under a one-year limited contract effective the 2024-25 contract year. The following person's under a one-year limited contract as a preschool assistant at the hourly rate and compensation listed below for six and one-half hour days per scheduled preschool days effective August 16th, 2024 through May 30th, 2025, subject to the availability of the public preschool grant funds. And that's Jamie Crouch, Christie Diaz, and Darlene Mahal. And then we're asking you to employ Janice Howery under a one-year limited contract as preschool secretary at the rating compensation of $13.45 per hour for seven and a half hour per scheduled preschool day effective August 1st, 2024 through June 16th, 2025, subject to the availability of public preschool grant funds. To employ Shannon Imus as a three-hour educational assistant playground at South Elementary School effective August 19th, 2024. To employ David Rota-Hausen as a three and three-quarter hour nutrition services helper position at Madison Middle School effective August 19th, 2024. We're asking you to approve each of the following substitute teachers as approved by the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve or Madison Local School District's Assistant Superintendent under a one-year limited teacher contract for the 2024-25 school year, beginning with Constance Buchanan and ending with Christopher Smith. We're asking you to employ the following persons, each as a casual day-to-day substitute, beginning with Kristin Camereri and ending with Georgia Murphy. We're asking you to employ each of the following as building substitutes for the 2024 school year at a rate of $135 per day, beginning with Sharon Alkenter and then ending with Carrie Zenz. We're asking you to employ Tiffany Green under a long-term substitute teacher contract from August 19th, 2024 through September 13th, 2024, to perform the duties of Debbie Green. We're asking you to employ the following certificated person under a one-year limited supplemental contract for the 2024-25 contract year. Mark McNamara as Madison Middle School Assistant Athletic Director. We're asking you to employ the following non-certificated persons under a one-year limited person service contract for the 2024-25 school year for the position listed below. limited person service contract for the 2024-25 school year for the position listed below. Lea Radabaugh as Madison High School Assistant Volleyball Coach and ending with Holly Yeo, Madison Middle School Seventh Grade Volleyball Coach. We're asking you to approve the change in placement on the teacher's salary schedule, beginning with Christopher Kalaric and ending with Jennifer Wolfert. We're asking you to approve the following transfers. Melanie Rankie from a three-and-three-quarter nutrition services helper to a seven-and-a-half hour position as Nutrition Services Assistant Manager, to increase the classified substitute rate of pay to step zero on the, of the OPEC salary schedule, effective August 12th, 2024. And to amend the contract of Andrew Resnick, co-assistant boy soccer coach, to the correct amount of $1,489 at the rate of .035 for the 24-25 school year. And that's the employment motion tonight.
Second. Any discussion?
Justin Lewis is the intervention specialist. He's a former graduate, actually, when I was at the high school, so. Another Madison grad is back at Madison.
And his mother is one of our building substitutes, and you could see how proud she was on Friday, just having her son right there. It was, it was a great moment for us. It was really good.
Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Harbach?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The year brings us a very busy consent calendar, which is why I don't read every name on the agenda. I have to save my voice for this one. To enter into a consultant services contract with Dominic Nicholas as Madison High School volleyball coach for the 24-25 school year, at a rate not to exceed $2,500, to be paid from the volleyball activity account. To approve the following volunteer football coaches, beginning with Jacob Glass and ending with Kevin Lawrence. To enter into an agreement with the Madison Township Police Department and Madison Local School District to provide a school resource officer to Madison High School for eight hours per day, Madison Middle School for seven hours per day, and North Elementary School for seven hours per day, at a cost not to exceed $109,000. This service will provide an officer on duty for the 24-25 school year. I do not have the village yet. To approve the 24-25 Madison High School, Madison Middle School, and elementary school handbooks and the pre-K parent handbooks as found on file in the board office, and they will be uploaded to the webpage after approval tonight. To approve the contract between the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio and Madison Local Schools for the service of two interpreters for the 2024-25 school year. To approve the contract between Belfair Jewish Children's Bureau, operating an educational institution known as Monarch School, and the Madison Local Schools for the education therapy and support for students served outside of the Madison Local School District for the 24-25 school year. To enter in an agreement between Madison Local School Districts and Wood County Educational Service Center to provide residential treatment for the Madison Local School students for the 24-25 school year as found on file in the board office. To approve the contract between Hogan Transportation and the Madison Local Schools to provide transportation students for students served outside the Madison Local School District for the 24-25 school year. To enter into an agreement between the Madison Local School District and Tender Loving Care Transportation Company to provide transportation services for students as needed pursuant to the agreement found on file in the board office. To approve the contract between the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, Crossroads Health, and Madison Local Schools for the education and support students served outside the Madison Local School District for the 24-25 school year. To enter into an agreement between the Madison Local School District and Crossroads Health to provide school-based services for students and their families for the 2024-25 school year. To approve the contract between the Madison Local School District and School Com Consultants to provide communication services for the 2024-25 school year at a cost not to exceed $12,000 as found on file in the board office. To approve the consultant services contract between Madison Local School District and Danny Crater for sign language interpreting services for the 2024-25 school year. To approve the following school fees for the 24-25 school year, elementary schools at $63, middle school $87, and high school per the attachment. Note that these did not go up from last year. To approve the nutrition services prices for the 2024 school year as follows. Breakfast program is free for all students regardless of pre-reduced paid status. Lunch prices for all grade levels, K-12 is $3.50. The board authorizes necessary adjustments in the à la carte prices to reflect changes in market prices. And that is our consent calendar tonight. I think I should.
I'll move. Second. Any discussion?
These contracts, and we're doing it for a lot of the students that are outside of the district and everything, is there any way, without breaking confidentiality, that we could have a cost so the public could see what it does cost? Would that be wrong?
No, what we'll do is, we'll break it down, because we're in the midst of doing that right now by the T2. So, rather than giving it to you piecemeal, 'cause it depends on the number of days...
I just think it would be nice, because I think the public doesn't understand these key factors, how that all adds up, you know, and, you know, how, you know, if it's 100 kids or, I don't, I don't know how many kids, I'm just throwing it out, how we're paying for other kids outside because they're...
I agree. And so, what I think we need to do is, what, I put this in the update on Friday, that with Sarah, I think we're gonna tackle like a program a month of what things cost, to sort of show the community that, you know, this is what encompasses special ed and what, break it down by cost. This is what our athletic costs are to run the athletic program, you know? The various programs that we run, not outside of just general education, that put the whole picture together so they just don't go. Because there are new people on here that I haven't seen before, because transportation has been a moving target. Trying to find transportation for some of these students, sometimes is a challenge. And it is expensive. We contracted the ESC to provide some transportation. CBS, our transportation provider, does some of that transportation. But there are certain, you know, students that we've had to find very specialized transportation for, so. So, what we, I think it would be good to see is what those costs are in the cost of a total program.
I made a chart rudimentary Wednesday. I'm sure Sarah can probably do a much better job with, but of all of the students that we have, the number of students, how much each program costs, and then, you know, so I had it on my little pie charts and, I mean, I use my charts with markers.
I just think it would be nice.
So, I'm sure Sarah could get that better and, you know, but yeah, that's something we can do.
But that's, you know, part of our strategic plan, is that financial transparency, but to really just attack it in a way that makes sense to the community, so that they can truly understand why things, why we're asking for what we ask for when we do ask for it.
So, it's a clear explanation to break it down so they can see what each step costs and what each student costs, and how many programs wrapped around one particular student. It's a lot, in some cases.
Yep. Well, it's a moving target. I think that's the hardest when you, well, I mean, just like any program that you put on, and when you have students that move in or move out that you weren't expecting or that things happen, and so, it's not, it's, there are a lot of hidden, you know, unknowns that cause, you know, the special education budget to be all over the place.
And it shifts and changes along with everybody's situation.
And the state doesn't always cover all this, does it?
No.
And the percentage is not, and, you know, and when I say that, it's because I think people don't realize how much, you know, it's not how much we're picking up compared to what the state is and how much, you know, if it's an extra half million dollars or whatever.
There's a big misunderstanding, that people think that all special education costs are covered, and Sarah, for sure, our access cost, the percentage is ridiculous from the amount that we actually, unfortunately, that funding has changed, but no, that's a big misunderstanding. People, and there was a time when people actually thought, "Oh, well, you make money on special education students." There is absolutely no making of any money, so it would be really a good lesson for a lot of people to understand how...
And I think it's due. I think that lesson is important for the community to see what these costs are.
Absolutely.
Do we have to call roll call now?
Yeah. This was discussion.
Where are we?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Harbach?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We do have a need to, for executive session this evening, so do we have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, commotion, or compensation of public employees who are related individuals?
I'll move. A second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And Mr. Harbach?
Yes.
Motion passes.